Okay, brothers, we're gonna go ahead and get started. First of all, I wanna say good evening to everyone. Thank you for joining on this Friday. The call is going to be recorded, so then we'll be placed on the fraternity's website, or we'll provide it out, the link out to you in case you have to leave early or you wanna just go back and review some of the information. But I wanna say thank you again for being here. With the events of this past week at the University of Missouri, I've been receiving phone calls and text messages and emails, as well as some of the leadership within the Midwestern region around what's been happening at the University of Missouri. On the call, I have Brother Phelan Simkins, who is the chapter president of Zeta Alpha chapter that's seated at the University of Missouri, who's going to give us a behind-the-scenes, behind-the-news-headlines view as to what's going on, what he and the chapter and the student body has been doing, and some of the next steps or assistance that they'll be looking at for Alpha Phi Alpha to support. Then we'll just have some overall next steps, but this call is strictly for the brothers of Zeta Alpha and Brother Simkins. Again, we're not gonna take questions or answers, but there will be a link, an email, that you can forward any questions that you may have, and then we'll reply to it as best we can and as soon as possible. But the call is for thirty minutes. All of the lines are muted with the exception of myself and Brother Simkins. But we'll make sure that you get the information, and we'll provide it to you. What I wanna do first is just kinda do a little recap of why we're here today. And it started a little bit more than two weeks ago. And it started back on November 2nd with Mr. Jonathan Butler, who is a member of Phi Beta Sigma, and also a member of the Concerned Student Group that's located at the university. And that group was started and formed about fifty years ago to deal with racial issues. So it's actually a civil, a college civil rights group at the university that started, and Mr. Butler is a member of that group. And he began a hunger strike around that time to bring attention to the acts of discrimination that's been occurring at the campus. From that time, his act, his protest act, started to gain attention through the student body, and ultimately through the University of Missouri football team. And the football team in which we have a member of Zeta Alpha who is a member of the football team by the name of Anthony Sherrills, he and other players from the football team started to get information and started to support what Mr. Butler was doing in regards to the discrimination at the University of Missouri. So by the time that November 8th hit, it had gained national visibility. Some of you may have first seen it on CNN or ESPN, mainly ESPN because it was a sports story that hit the national airwaves. And then that's when I was made aware. A few brothers have contacted me personally to let me know what was occurring at the University of Missouri. And then in turn, I contacted Brother Simkins during the chapter meeting, in fact, to get more information and to get a better understanding. By now, you know that the university's president, Tim Wolf, and the chancellor at the university, R. Bowen Lofton, had resigned among the protests as the buildup to Mr. Butler's protest was occurring. And so the two top leaders of the university and the campus resigned, which prevented some further embarrassment to them and possibly to the university. I've also been in personal contact with Brother Peyton Head, who is the SGA president at the university. And we've commented, and he provided me information on what occurred post the resignation, but he also indicated that there were still tensions and there were still threats to some of the students. Again, some of the information you may have heard over the news. But Brother Peyton, Brother Simkins, the Brothers of Zeta Alpha have been in constant contact with not only myself, but Brother Willis Lonzer, who is the Midwestern Regional Vice President, as well as the local field staff leaders within the District of Missouri. So we've been in constant contact and making sure that, one, at least our members are safe, and two, to extend any sort of assistance that was required. And Brother Simkins will go into a little bit more detail. But we've had brothers there locally, brothers from the local alumni chapters in the surrounding area have come to the campus, have been communicating with Brother Simkins, the chapter advisors involved. So basically, the line of sight of the leadership of Alpha has been wrapped around the Brothers of Zeta Alpha and the students at the university. On November the 11th, I sent out a statement to the membership. And again, I publicly wanna say, publicly commend Brothers Head and Brother Sherrills and Brother Simkins and the chapter for their leadership. When Brother Simkins and I spoke, he indicated that this wasn't really pushed by Alpha, this was really pushed by the Concerned Student 1950 Organization. And they were a part of it, they supported it. Brother Sherrills was instrumental in communicating it through the leadership of the Missouri football team. So we've had members who were very engaged in this process from the very beginning. And then by now, you've probably heard that on yesterday, Brother Michael Middleton, who is a Zeta Alpha initiate, 1966, was named the interim president. In fact, I believe that Brother Middleton had retired from the university in another capacity, but he was named the interim president. And we'll be reaching out to Brother Middleton for any assistance that he may need from Alpha Phi Alpha and the local members. So that's the timeline of events over the course of the last week, in the last two weeks. What I'm going to do now is turn it over to Brother Simkins so he can give us a true behind-the-scenes, boots-on-the-ground view as to what's occurring and how Alpha Phi Alpha can help. Brother Simkins?
Greetings to our brothers, oh sixty, everybody online right now. My name is Phelan Simkins, current chapter president, initiated Zeta Alpha Fall 2014. There are some other members in the room being impacted right now. But to give you guys just like the general idea now, so as Brother Tullman was saying, there have been a lot going on in the last week alone. But to give you some background on Concerned Student 1950 itself, it was originally started a little prior to our homecoming, after we had multiple racial incidents happen on campus from Brother Head being called the N-word downtown, just enjoying himself, to our Legion of Black Collegians, Black Student Government here, Homecoming Court being called the same racial slur at Traditions Plaza on campus, and nothing occurring of it, all the way to poop swastika being drawn in one of our residential halls, and nothing occurring of it until just recently where the police statement was just released. So there have been a lack of response on campus. So when Concerned Student 1950 was formed, it was to get a response for everything that had yet to be responded to. And when the protest from Homecoming occurred where members were outside of the Homecoming Parade and they were protesting and they got in front of Tim Wolf's car, and from there, they were trying to get his attention, and then pro-onlookers of the Homecoming Parade came and tried to break them up. Tim Wolf's car ultimately tapped JB in passing, and there was never a response from that as well. So that's kind of another fuel to the fire as to why Tim Wolf had to go. I know a lot of people are probably questioning the motive behind getting rid of Tim Wolf. Outside of the entire premise of everything that's gone on recently, all the way back in 2012, there have been many multiple times where people have tried to address Tim Wolf, whether it was on a graduate scale issue, comparing, asking him for assistance in certain areas of him not responding, all the way up until recently where you have these racial charge incidences, and you've had multiple opportunities to learn and educate yourself about all of this, but nothing occurring of it. That's when you realize that it's time to get leadership out and try to find somebody who is willing to learn. So having Pearl Middleton actually not elected interim president is a big step in the right direction. Not everyone may feel as such, but this is definitely a start for the University of Missouri in the right way. Chancellor Lofton resigning is a big, big step as well. The past few weeks with all these resignations, campus has definitely become a little more hostile in its nature. I don't know if everyone knows what Yik Yak is, but to explain that, Yik Yak is an anonymous app location that you can download on your phones. You can pretty much post about anything or whatever you want in your surrounding area. Your anonymity can remain there. So we've had a lot of students make threats. One, for instance, where a student was saying that he did not necessarily agree with the leadership, Peyton's leadership here on campus. So he threatened to commit suicide in front of the columns if he was not removed from office by the following morning. Then you also have other students talking about their plan on shooting all the black students that they've come across. You have people on campus in speaker circles shouting hateful and racial slurs and trying to scare students on cars with Confederate flags and students, for lack of a better word, being [BLEEP] and driving around and blocking students into their parking spaces and other locations on campus. So we have, we've had a lot recently, games on Black Culture Center here on campus, which is kind of a safe haven for most students. It was vandalized, they spray painted the word "black" in black on signs, ironically. So there's also been that. So there's been quite the uproar and slow progress within the University of Missouri's campus. However, in the past few days, after the threat of students not being able to go to class in fear of being harassed or shot at, students have definitely started to come back. We have some students going to class now. Of course, some people still feel unsafe. Some students actually went home when the threat was made. So right now, there is no real sense of normalcy anymore on Mizzou's campus. No one really knows what normal looks like. We don't even know how long it will take to get back to normal. But as a chapter, the reason we didn't put ourselves out there as Zeta Alpha or in the name of Alpha was because we didn't wanna take momentum away from the movement that was already in place. We just wanted to aid in the movement. So as black males and black student leaders on campus, we put that foot forward and we use our networks, our resources to help Concerned Students, to help all of our fellow students not only just feel safe, but you know, try to get that voice out there to make real change. So with Brother Sherrills being able to use his football connections, Brother Head going against all these multiple interviews, we've had quite a bit of backlash, not only on their specific end, but also on the chapter end. You know, you have people who definitely call you or DM you with hateful slurs and emails. So we've gotten a lot of things. But like I've told everyone who's contacted me recently, whether it's phone calls, text messages, we really truly do as a campus, not only just as, I just appreciate all of you all collectively. And the big thing right now in terms of needs would definitely be prayer for the campus. There's a lot of hate and negativity, and I don't know what to say to you all like in terms of needs, but like prayer is definitely something we really do need on this campus because from here, it only gets harder moving forward because this is just the beginning. We haven't got everything we want and everything we need out of the change. There's still administrative staff that needs to leave. It's great that we have two resigns, but there's still some others that are being pushed to get out of office so we can begin to like make real change on campus. So I really do appreciate all the brothers who are listening, called in, took the time out of the day to get a little more updated. The media definitely makes this look like a war zone out here. It's not that bad, I promise you. But there are still definitely some things that we're working towards, not only just as a campus, but as individuals to try to change on Mizzou's campus.
Brother Simkins, a couple of questions for you. Now that an interim president has been named, has there been any sort of conversation in regards to next steps from a university leadership perspective?
In terms of university leadership, they've been having a lot more closed-door meetings as of late. So now that Brother Middleton has been announced interim president, you have a new interim chancellor. They've been looking, we just got a brand-new position for Diversity Chief and Chief of Diversity Inclusion here on campus. So his name is Chuck Henson. He just took office recently. So he's been around and trying to assess the situation on campus. But in terms of overall next steps, as students, we have a list of things that we would like to see done, which can be pretty much summed up into three things. Trying to rebuild the Mizzou community at this point because clearly there is a divide. Second would definitely be the idea of shared governance, so trying to get more of a student say and who assumes these full-time roles after the interim role, whether it is the current person who has the role or somebody else. Trying to get more of a student input because these are kind of the people that they have an effect on. So moving forward, having that idea and that dialogue to see what that looks like would definitely be something that needs to happen. And then the last thing is trying to get more resources for the marginalized students here on campus. So these are conversations that are happening between students, between staff members, the whole night yard. So we're just trying to figure out what is, what, trying to figure out what the next step really looks like on a university scale.
You mentioned, you know, some of the threats and you know that some of the students are feeling unsafe. Has the local chief of police of the university, has he made, or she, I really don't know, has any comments been made from that standpoint of how the students can be feeling safe or safer?
No. It sounds really bad, but no. Like when the Yik Yak posts were made, only because there are totally aware of threats and they're [BLEEP]. And I won't, uh... By the morning when they did a [BLEEP], we had all these Yik Yak posts saying that they had apprehended the suspect in question. So to go from not even believing that finding some suspect kind of caused a lot of confusion and tension on campus with students just because you blew it off and now you have people saying, yeah, this is a real thing. So there hasn't really been much statement-wise from the police. You can see their presence a little more on campus, but there still hasn't been anything verbally said to students to ensure their safety.
I have a, to the plans or additional plans for an assembly or protest or anything where there'll be another call for students and faculty and maybe the community to come together? Is there any plans in the works?
I'm pretty sure there are. A lot of the protests that do happen are kind of either spontaneous. Like I can either know a day ahead of time or I can know the day of. Like today, we had a protest that new here on campus. So it's still a lot going on. There'll still be like protests within the coming weeks, after Thanksgiving break, all that. So it's definitely gonna be a lot that's still going on in terms of trying to get that presence now.
Okay, my final question. How is Mr. Butler doing since his hunger strike ended?
He's definitely, um, he's back in the food, of course. Once you get out of a hunger strike, especially for as long as he was, you can't go back to solid food right away. But he's starting to eat. You can see that he's starting to get a lot more of his physical strength back and he's starting to look a lot more better. And he can kind of function on his own now. So it's definitely, definitely a good look for him.
Okay, great. Anything else you wanna share with the brothers?
In terms of everyone that asks like, hey, what can we do to lend assistance? I just want you guys to know, if I haven't responded to you yet, it's not that I've been ignoring you. It's just like my emails and the chapter email kind of gets a mass influx of these questions. So for those listening right now, if you want the answer to that question, you can honestly just stay in contact with myself or any other members of the chapter that you know. You can shoot an email over to mizzoualphae-mail.com. And like I said, I'm gonna try my best to get back to you guys, I promise. It's just a lot's been going on and trying to run and get stuff planned, but not just academics, you know. Everyone's still trying to graduate on campus. So yeah, just be patient with us, guys. I'm sorry, but if you have any other questions or if you want me to direct you in certain aspects, just email mizzoualphas@gmail.com and I'll definitely be sure to get back to you.
All right, MizzouAlphas, M-I-Z-Z-O-U?
Alphas.
At gmail dot com. All right, mizzoualphas@gmail.com. M-I-Z-Z-O-U, gmail, alphas@gmail.com.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, great. Well, thank you for the update, Brother Simkins. And you have about sixty brothers that have joined this call. And we appreciate you giving us a boots-on-the-ground perspective as to what's occurring. And brothers, again, Brother Simkins and Brother Head, Brother Sherrills and the whole chapter and the whole community should all be commended for what they're doing. We've been texting and phone calling almost every day this week, Brother Simkins and I. So I'm very well aware and very well connected with what's going, that there is Alpha support for what's happening at their location. So thank you again, Brother Simkins. And brothers on the next steps, oops, sorry about that. The next steps, again, the regional leadership team under Brother Lonzer, the Midwestern Regional Vice President. He also has a local brother on his team, on his leadership team, that's been assigned to work with Zeta Alpha for any assistance. So there is a direct line of contact with the chapter as well as working with the local field staff as in the district director, Brother Cook, and the chapter advisor, Brother Green. I will, I haven't yet because it was just the first twenty-four hours, but I will personally reach out to Brother Middleton to offer any assistance on behalf of the fraternity or any sort of local assistance that we can provide now that we have, in a way, another Alpha president. Not the way that we want, but we have another Alpha president, college president, that, you know, just like all of the other Alpha college presidents we have, we will provide them with our full support and resources for anything that he needs and his university needs. When situations come about like this, this is our third town hall, the normal response is, what is Alpha doing? And you know, the very first thing that we do is a due diligence. We have to get information. And so, brothers, I wanna say that if you don't see a statement from me within the first twenty-four hours or even twenty-four minutes, it normally does not mean I don't know what's going on. It's we wanna do our due diligence on issues. But then, once we come to some resolution, some positive outcome on issues like this, especially issues with race, we wanna harvest any of those best practices and strategies so that we can apply to the next time that it's going to occur. Because, brothers, unfortunately, there will always be a next time. It may not be in higher ed, it will be in your local school system or it will be at your local company. Either way, we wanna build a repository and a knowledge base on when something happens and of this nature. And the question is asked, what can we do? We wanna be able to have something to provide. So we'll be harvesting a lot of these best practices from engagement down to outcome and resolution. And so, again, we're utilizing this. It's an evolving process, not gonna be static. It's not something that was just, would just go on a shelf and collect us. But we will move forward on how we harvest these types of things so that we're supporting really the next generation of civil rights activists within this organization and how this organization can be included. Alpha Phi Alpha may not be on the byline or the headline, but folks will know that they have received support from this organization, resources from this organization, not just financially, but with time. And usually, that's the next best thing, or usually the best thing because if you have members who are local to an issue, we need a brother's time. So we're gonna harvest those best practices and strategies. We need to be kept in a loop. Unfortunately, the fraternity is not staffed to always keep on top of any and every issue that's happening around the globe out of Baltimore, Maryland. Just to give you some quick stats, we have Alpha chapters seated in over four hundred and eighty cities around the globe. And I'll repeat that again. We have Alpha chapters that are seated in over four hundred and eighty cities around the globe and seated at over four hundred colleges around the globe. Since this issue, I've received communications about, well, my school is having this issue and my school is having that issue. But prior to this particular situation at the University of Missouri and in here, national acclaim and national attention, no one shared that with us. So we need you to help us. You have to keep us in a loop. And keeping Alpha in the loop is not necessarily just calling me directly, but work it through your line of sight with your leadership chain in the fraternity. And that is contacting and working through your regional vice presidents, your district directors, your chapter advisors. Because usually the much information coming from so many different places, it's hard to discern at times what's fact, what's fiction, what's our role, what's not our role, what we will do, what we will not do. Because I will say, brothers, Alpha will not take on every issue that comes, evaluate every issue that comes up, and we will make a determination on how far we move, how much we provide and resource with the issue at hand. But start with your leadership, your line of leadership. If you are a chapter president, you should be on the call or emailing your area director, district director, and regional vice president. If you're a chapter member, work it through your chapter president. They are your local leaders, your field staff leaders, that once information is correlated and provided, then it can be shifted and how we shift it through the leadership chain on how we are able to communicate and create next steps and move forward with the next steps. And if you don't have the phone numbers to anybody, you can always contact the fraternity directly. Contact it through the corporate headquarters. You can send an email to communications@apa1906.net. We will forward it through the proper committee. It will come to me or through our proper leadership within the region. If you need bodies locally, that's when we can communicate with a district director, the regional vice president, to get a message out to brothers who are local to a situation if you need bodies of black men. That was one of the things that Brother Simkins had talked about, he and I talked about earlier this week, just prior to the resignations that occurred, that they just needed a presence. They just needed people to be seen that this issue is very serious. And for what they do there at the University of Missouri can affect Penn State University or could affect the University of Michigan. Who knows? But the fact is, once they see the presence, once they know that they have support, then it's contagious and it'll move forward to everyone else. So, brothers, these are just the next steps that are going on. There are other things that are happening, again, behind the scenes. Again, I don't necessarily document and communicate what I'm doing every second or every minute of the day. But do know that we are involved, that we are in communication, that we are in the know. And if you have an issue that's occurring right now, let us know and then we will move forward with the appropriate response. And we will look to have a positive outcome on that issue or event that's occurring today. So, brothers, this call was only be for thirty minutes and we are now at the thirty-minute mark. I wanna thank- I want to thank the fifty-seven brothers that have joined this call. I think we hit about sixty throughout the course of the call. Again, I would like to thank Brother Simkins for joining the call and providing us with a first-person view as to what's going on. And again, I commend Brother Head, Brother Sherrills, Brother Simkins, and our brothers of Zeta Alpha for availing themselves and really showcasing that we are advocating for our communities, even our campus communities. And I would like to also say prayers are for Brother Middleton. He, his job is to calm that university. So as Brother Simkins had asked for our prayers for what's occurring, let's also pray for Brother Middleton to have the fortitude and the strength to ensure that he can heal that community so that the University of Missouri can focus on educating our students and our black students. So with that, brothers, we will end the call. Thank you again for joining. And this is being recorded. It will be provided. And have a great weekend. For those of you that are attending district conferences, have a great time at your respective district conference, and we'll talk to you soon. Have a great night, brothers. Bye-bye.